Hi, welcome everybody to this regularly, I can never say that word, scheduled school committee meeting, 7:00 PM Thursday, October 14th. We are here in the council chambers and I would like to welcome everybody. And I would like to suggest that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Superintendent Tager, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. And public comments? I believe we have a couple of people here. I asked if you could please come up to the podium and state your name and your address if you are over the age of 18. If you're under that, then please don't share your address. And welcome.
I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak tonight. I, along with other students, am here to address the current policing of students' bodies as well as the lack of non-binary and transgender student support in Bangor High School. Here are some questions that we are hoping to get answers to tonight. Many students are struck by the inconsistency between the dress code, as it appears in the official dress code rulebook, and how the rules, restrictions, and punishments are actually enforced. In the school, for, or, excuse me, for example, nowhere in the code are there rules about students showing their midriff or cleavage. Yet, these restrictions are routinely enforced in the school, which takes precedence. The code is written or there's strictions that appear to reflect the discomfort of staff, of some staff regarding clothing and the body.
And your next one?
All right, my next one. According to the state of Maine, students have the right to use the bathroom that makes their gen- that matches their gender identity. Yet, this is not the practice at Bangor High School. Why are some staff members continuing to tell individual students which bathrooms they can and cannot use? Would you like me to continue with the rest?
Yeah.
Sure. Alrighty. The only gender-neutral bathroom accessible to students is the bathroom in the nurse's office, which often is not available for use. What steps can be taken to ensure that every student can have a bathroom available to them that they are comfortable using? Lastly, what steps can be taken to ensure that every student bathroom will be supplied with menstruation products? We know that there is some controversy around these issues and we appreciate the council's consideration and response to them.
Thank you so very much. We really appreciate you speaking to us today. We generally do not respond directly to anything, but I do want you to know that in particular Superintendent Tager and I are looking at some of these issues. He's already been in contact with people at the high school in order to, you know, look at what we can do. And we are looking at policies.
Thank you so much.
We hope to bring you back.
Mike, uh, we hope to bring you back so that we can, like, share some of, some of the stuff that, that you have brought up.
Alrighty, thank you so much. Have a great night.
Okay, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Landon Micho. She kind of just, like, mostly addressed the stuff that I was gonna bring up. But, um, so, since you guys aren't, like, able to, like, actively talk about it or talk about, like, what steps can be taken, like, who, like, who would we, like, who would we look to talk to in order to get those changes enacted? Could be a big one.
So, so as I mentioned, I mean, I know that you have reached out directly to the committee and we've, I've shared this all with Superintendent Tager and we are actively looking at each of these issues that you've brought to our attention so that we can, we can address them. And would you, I mean, I'm happy to reach back out to you once we've done a little bit of research. Because, I mean, obviously, nothing is as simple as, as one wishes it would be in life. So, we are actually looking at this and we are incredibly grateful to, to you students who have brought this. So.
That's, yeah, she kind of covered what I was gonna say.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, both of you. Is there anybody else who would like to make some public comments? Okay, fantastic. Thank you. So, we have superintendents' proposals and updates, action items?
The action item 1A, I'm recommending first reading of the comprehensive. I'm recommending first reading of the comprehensive emergency management plan, including the packet and the public portion of the plan. If you'd like to view the confidential portions of the plan prior to the meeting, please contact Lori Mitchell.
Okay, thank you. And am I vote, we voting on that?
You are.
We are. Thank you. Do I have any question, any comments or questions? Okay, yes. Member Hassanin?
So there has been updates to that comprehensive plan?
Yes, there, there are. We can tell you that Ray's been working on that plan and I know we're working to begin our suicide prevention committee as well. And I think that meeting is tomorrow, so that'll be updated after that meeting as well.
Fantastic. Any other questions? So, and just to, just to reiterate, we, we have access to looking at any of the, the private portion of this.
Yeah, Lori, you can look at that with Lori Mitchell or Ray will help you walk through it as well.
So, and the public portion is on?
It's in your packet, yep.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much. So, um, then, all, so we've had our discussion. All those in favor? I, we don't know, because there's no more Zoom.
Motion carries 5-0.
Excellent. Thank you. Informational items?
Business Director Jerry Hayman will update you on the capital improvement projects.
Thank you. Good evening. In your packet was a letter I prepared for Mr. Tager. It's an annual letter that I've done before that you've seen many times. It's a little later in the season. It's due to the scarcity of bids and supplies and materials for COVID. So, um, it was a little later to parrot and, in actuality, some of the bids, because of that, I've been experiencing 20 to 60% increases over what normally has happened in the past. But these quotes are quite accurate. And I'd like to not read the dollar amounts, but the, the projects in general. The total of the sheet is 1.839 million. I'd like to remind you that that's taken from residual receipts at the end of the fiscal year. After all the regular school year expenses have paid, that happens. We get a chance to address our very long capital project list. It's, um, you see a five-year list every year and it's $25 million plus. So, these are the ones we're going to address right now. Abraham Lincoln School keyless entry and the removal of fuel tank. We've been on natural gas for over 10 years and the tanks remain in the ground. And we're high school. We fixed the kitchen chiller. We also removed a fuel tank. We're trying to remove about a third of the remaining asbestos tiles in, in the building. We're also looking to address softball field lighting and the soccer field lighting, which will greatly enhance the playing in the coming years. Down East School drainage on the pavilion playground. That was constantly a problem and we've finally, hopefully, taken care of that. Some HVAC control replacements in keyless entry. Fairmount School, we're going to pave the teacher's parking lot, which has been a disrepair for a while. We're also working on the hot water demand at Fairmount and a water booster at Fairmount. 14th Street, we have a number of doors, windows we're going to replace. We're also going to replace two pieces of the playground for Fairmount that's been in disrepair, which a couple of principals can attest to that had to be discontinued use of over the last year. Fruit Street, we're gonna have some lighting up in the parking lot on Mount Hope. Vine Street, um, we're going to address the canopy issue there. Replace some exterior doors. Mary Snow, there's a crack in the basement we want to fix. There's some steam trap repairs we need to do and some exterior doors. Well, and Cohen, there is a bleacher replacement. They'll be ADA compliant and motorized. And we also want to do a site plan and, and tropical, and a study, which doesn't exist at this current time. And we've also removed some shrubbery around the building. We're gonna replace some leaking pipes and steam traps in that facility as well. And we're going to convert the kitchen to a natural gas away from propane. And last, but not least, is Doughty. We're gonna replace, also replace the bleachers in that facility and make them ADA compliant. We're also gonna do a site plan similar to Cohen and we've removed shrubbery in front of the building. So that's our plan of action for the summer and fall and most of these projects are well underway.
Fantastic. Thank you. Are there any questions from the committee?
Thank you very much.
Oh, wait, we have a question from a member Mundell?
Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So, the converting bleachers to ADA compliance, does that make us all up to date throughout the whole department in terms of accessibility?
It will in those two schools. It will supply areas for, um, people to actually watch the games in the gyms and, you know, for wheelchairs, et cetera. So, it's long overdue. The bleachers are in disrepair and the folks there are quite anxious for it to be done. So, we, we've actually ordered them. So, um, we'll see when they're delivered in America. We'll have to do some electrical work, but we'll get them in as soon as possible.
So, all the gyms and the other schools, are, are they all ADA compliant?
That I cannot attest to. I do not know. I can look into it and get back to you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate the report, the update. And we have a report of resignations.
Reporting the following resignations. Jeremy Dubois, .25 IEP Coordinator, William S. Cohen School. Marissa Brown, Assistant Coach, Girls Swim, Bangor High School.
Thank you very much. And a report of reassignments?
Reporting the following teacher reassignments. Angela Lundey from Special Education Teacher at .5 Fairmount School and .5 Mary Snow School to Special Education Teacher at Mary Snow School. Julian Cookson from Speech Language Pathologist at Fairmount School to Speech Language Pathologist at .8 Fairmount School and .214th School.
Thank you very much. Business action items. So, we have minutes. We have the regular meeting of September 22nd.
Recommending approval of the draft minutes of the September 22nd, 2021 Regular School Committee Meeting.
Discussion. All those in favor? All those who abstain?
Motion carries 4-0.
And we have personnel extra duty assignments?
Recommending committee approval of the following extra duty assignments for school year 2021, 2022. Jeffrey Sanders Rampage Advisor, Bangor High School. Natisha Lankhorst, .5 Key Club Advisor, Bangor High School. Misty Conraff, .5 Key Club Advisor, Bangor High School. Karen Bagley, IEP Coordinator, William S. Cohen School.
Need a motion?
Second.
Discussion. See none. All those in favor?
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
And then we have a second reading of policies.
Recommending a second reading of revised policy, GDB 7 Support Staff Compensation Guide.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Uh, and donations. I have no committee member Warren Crusoe here. Member Saret. If you could read those.
Two special education here. Here's me. To use Leckie Mygo size two standard having a total dollar value of $5,500. James F. Doughty School from Maniac Nutrition, 60 nutritional teas for faculty and staff, having a total dollar value of 420. To William S. Cohen School from Art and Beth Catritis, a cash donation for student water bottles, having a total dollar value of 150. To Bangor High School from the class of 2021 Project Graduation and outside eating area for students, having a total dollar value of 3,300.
And I need a motion?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor in accepting these wonderful, generous, incredibly kind donations?
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Of course, I would love for Carrot and Garrett and Katie to tell us what a Leckie Mygo size two standard is at some point. That'd be cool. Okay, introductory items. We have some policies.
Recommending first reading of new and revised policies. Revised Policy BCB, Committee Member Conflict of Interest. New Policy GBGB, Workplace Bullying. Revised Policy IGBAB, Child Find for Special Education and for Related AIDS and Services. New Policy KDA, Public Information Program. Revised Policy KDB, Public's Right to Know, Freedom of Access. Revised Policy JHCD, Administering Medications to Students in Schools. Revised Policy JGF, Use of Physical Restraint and Seclusion.
Um, is it the committee's will that we take these as a whole?
We can ask questions about individual ones.
Yes, correct. Yes. Okay. Discussion. Member Saret?
I don't have to go first.
Can, well, perhaps, and I think I know what you might be asking. Perhaps Superintendent Tager can, can give us a little bit more detail in this new revised policy of use of physical restraint and seclusion?
Yes, that's, thank you.
I, I knew that would be the, the popular one. Kristi Babin, would you mind sharing a little bit about that? We just did a little, um, meeting with our principals on this policy and there are some significant changes.
Make sure you turn it on.
I think it's still on. The green light's on. So, the new law is a broader law. And it's a state law, so it pertains to all students, all staff. And there are two significant changes. The law states that there has to be imminent risk of seriously bodily injury in order for a restraint or seclusion to occur. In addition to that, um, any contact with a child that prevents their arms, legs, or torso from moving is considered a restraint. So, an example, at the high school level, a staff member used to be able to break up a fight and that was considered an exemption from a restraint. It's no longer an exemption. It's considered a restraint on students' bodies. So, we're not gonna change our practices because we still will interrupt a, a physical altercation, but there'll be paperwork and there'll be reports to the Department of Education on that. Does that give you?
Yeah, that's helpful. That was what I was gonna ask about, was the, the, the strike through of number seven, a brief period of physical contact necessary to break up a fight. So, so why is the, what is the strike through? What is the purpose of that?
So, that used to be an exemption underneath the old Chapter 33 law that the main Department of Education wrote, that you could, it was an exemption. You could have an altercation where staff stepped in and separated two students and it was not considered a physical restraint. That was an exemption to the law and now it's not considered an exemption. So, that's taken out of the policy because now it's considered a restraint.
So, if an assistant principal comes around the corner and two students are engaged in a physical altercation, the assistant principal can lay hands on the students to separate them, but there's now an additional layer of paperwork.
Of paperwork and reporting to the department. So, in all actuality, because the law is broad, the restraint and seclusion data that we report to the state is going to increase.
Thank you.
Does that answer?
Member Hassanin?
You know, if a teacher were to be striked by a student and defending himself or self.
Yes. You cannot. You can still do it. And we've told our staff they're not gonna change their practices because we don't want staff to be injured, right? But under the old law, the exemption was if you were deflecting a student from harming, then it was an exemption to the law. Now, it's considered a restraint because you're restricting their movement.
So, we'll continue to do what we do to protect students, faculty, and staff, but I would expect the numbers to go up significantly. So, we wanted you to be very aware of this.
And the new laws begins on October 18th, but the main Department of Education hasn't caught up to that new law. So, we're waiting for guidance from them.
But there would be like a breakdown of what exactly happened, right? Like, incident reports so that way we know that this is not an actual, like, restraint, right?
Yeah. For the law, it's an actual restraint and we'd have to document it and report it, but there'll be instant reports that will be. Yeah, it does put more work on the staff.
Right.
It's additional paperwork.
Member Mundell, did you have a question?
No, just to follow on with Marwa, I think she asked my question. Just, I just wanna make sure you'll be keeping that data so that we can see what the true increase is.
Yeah, it has to be reported to the Department of Education and there's additional reporting this year based on that new law. You also have to report serious physical injury to students or staff, which wasn't a piece before.
May I, I'm gonna ask a really quick question. Um, do we know why, what's motivated this? Because, I mean, it really sounds like there's a lot of extra paperwork involved.
Um, so it's been a national movement across the nation. You know, people don't want students restrained or secluded unless necessary.
Right.
Yep.
It, it's just interesting that I'm restraining your movement to hit me? Okay.
We're hoping we get further guidance from the Department of Education.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that. Are there any other questions about any of the other policies? Yes, member Mundell?
I have just a general question. When we get a new policy, could, could you give us the context for why we're getting that policy now? Like, in this case, there was a new law that was passed. So, for a, a bunch of these, you know, I, I'm sure there are different reasons for why we're getting them now.
We just had our legislative update and we, so this is kind of the time of the year that this happens.
Okay.
So, we will make changes in our existing policies and then some of these are, are new as, as well. So, it's, it's kind of just the time of the year that this happens. And I think Kristi mentioned that these go into law on October the 18th. And now the main DOE is still catching up, but we worked through our attorneys and thought we should share the information with you all as quickly as we got it. So, we just met with principals last week and went over all this and we wanted you to see it as a school committee as well. The other one that nobody has, has really asked about, but is kind of interesting is workplace bullying. One of the things that, that is there, and Kristi and Kathy attended this, this workshop where they explained it, but I, I know that one of the things that I understand is if there is, um, a teacher that's, or one of our employees that's bullied over social media, it's something that we're to investigate. I'm not clear yet on what we're to do after we investigate it, but that is something that's a new concern. Is there anything additional, Kathy or Kristi? That was just something that was, seemed unusual to me.
Yes, member Saret?
Yes.
Yes, member Saret?
So, and I was, I actually did have a question on this one because I was confused. So, workplace bullying, this is not horizontal violence that we're talking about. It's, you know, bullying that's perpetrated on our, our faculty and staff? Or it can be both, both ways?
Okay.
Okay, because, and I was confused about this because, I mean, we do have, I mean, this is a new policy supposedly, but I thought we already have policies in place that protect, right, against?
Outside. Okay, okay.
Okay, but, so, like, a teacher bullying another teacher or, uh, you know? Right, right. I'm just saying that this covers, that's comprehensive, right? It's inclusive of all different types, like even, like sexual harassment. Okay, because that's what I thought. I thought this is, I mean, that's bullying, but, I mean, harassment is different, so.
Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Interesting. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. I should all know better.
A member Saret, did you?
I can wait.
Okay, then, member Mundell?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, is this a result of, of legislation or is this just internal to Bangor?
This is all a result of legislation.
Dr. Harris, why don't you come on up?
It's, it's all a result of, of legislation.
It was a result of legislation. Every single one of these policy updates are results of legislation and changes in the law. So, we're trying to be on top of things to make sure that our policies reflect the current law.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I didn't get to jump in.
It's, member Saret was next, so if.
Is this, so, this policy would cover something like the incident we had last year where a parent video recorded a lesson.
Correct.
Posted it to social media and ended up resulting in harassment of the teacher.
Correct. So, currently, main law states that only one person has to be aware of any type of recordings. But this actually goes a little bit further and says, except for when teachers are presenting knowledge, information through Zoom, pre-recorded lessons, things like that, then you have to have the agreement from both parties. So, it goes, um, kind of layer, gives a layer of protection for teachers, instructors.
And does that extend even to non-electronic materials?
Yes.
If a worksheet went home, that a, a parent or guardian had took or two and then posted it, look what my child's exposed to.
I'm not sure on that. Do you remember? I, I can look into that and find out. I've been reading a lot of law lately. Poor Kristi's like, hey, this is sound. Yeah, but I will find out and get back to you.
Member Hassanin?
Yes, and I just, I was wondering if you could, if you don't mind, um, sending us, like, the, the bill? That was the piece of legislation that was, um, part of this. I would just love to read it.
Yep. On all the policies at the bottom, you'll see a reference to the laws, um, that are there. But the new legislation, I can certainly get you those.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I think you're off the hook. Thank you. Okay, so, seeing no other questions, all those in favor of this first reading? Only the first reading?
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Um, and then committee updates. Do we have any comments or questions from the committee? Yes, member Mundell?
Committee updates?
Uh, that, yes, and that's, well, representative reports is next, so.
So, there was a spruce meeting last Thursday. And I, I, I attended from out of town and so it was a little bit dicey. I was sort of there and sort of not, but I was there as much as I could be. And. And we, I guess Dr. Webb discovered that we were supposed to be holding meetings in public because this was a Zoom meeting, so the decision was made to rehold the meeting in October. So this meeting is kind of scrubbed, and then we'll meet again in October, so.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but Member Mundell, you are on the Suicide Prevention Committee, and as Superintendent Tager said, that is meeting
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Fantastic. Oh, okay. What, what time is that meeting? Okay. And you have both Sue and Claire. Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for that. Any other, any other committee updates? Yes, Member Sword.
Yes, the UTC Board met Thursday, October seventh. Their enrollment has fluctuated down a bit because of the adjustment of scheduling. Instead of seven hundred and fourteen, they're only at six hundred and ninety-three, which is actually awesome. Considering when I started out there, they were around three hundred. So UTC has doubled in the last six years, and it's going to go even stronger for the need of the students. We had an executive session at the beginning to discuss bias and so forth because as a committee, we are responsible for choosing the new director of UTC. So we also put together the advertising of information we needed to advertise the job. So that should be posted tomorrow. Other than that, UTC is up and running smoothly.
Fantastic. Thank you. And yes, Member Hassan.
And DEI Committee is meeting for the first time on November third, and I think we have a solid group of, for, for, for different committees, about six people each, right, Superintendent Tager? Yeah, so we're, we're really excited about kicking that off for the year.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, and do we have any other reports? All right, some informational items. Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, we have our next regular meeting here at seven PM. Monday, November eighth, the reorganizational meeting here, eleven AM at the Council Chambers. And followed by Monday, November fifteenth, we have a board training workshop that will be five thirty PM at the William S. Cohen School. And Wednesday, November seventeenth, we have another regular meeting here at seven PM in the Council Chambers. Questions and comments from the committee? Okay, yes, Member Mundell?
Yeah, I just want to thank the students for coming today. I know it takes a lot of guts to stand up in front of a bunch of adults in authority and talk about issues of concern that you have. I know one of them has left already, but it's always, I I find it all always great to hear from our students. And I'm wondering, I share the the concerns that you voice, and I guess I'm curious if we could hear maybe from Mr. Doyle about the transgender bathroom policy and and what's actually happening at the high school with that?
Green is good, right?
Green is good.
Green is good. We actually do have four single-use bathrooms in the building, the nurse's office being one. There's one down the administrative wing, and there's two adjacent to the cafeteria. So those are open to students. We can probably publicize that better. As far as feminine hygiene products, I know those are in all of our bathrooms. Those are placed there by a student group. So, and I'm in the bathrooms regularly. I can confirm they're there.
So are are students allowed to go to the bathroom that corresponds with their gender identity?
They are.
Okay.
They're.
And do you find that there's general acceptance among the other students?
I do.
For that?
I, a very high degree of acceptance. It's one of the reasons I'm proud to to work in that building and for this district. Our, our kids are, it's a different era. I know what it was like when I went to school. I won't say how long ago that was, but it's, it's a very different era. There's a very high degree of acceptance and individual expression. And I know back in, back in the day, a lot of that stuff would not have been tolerated as well as it is right now. So, yeah, that's, it's very positive.
That's great to hear.
It's encouraging.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone? Yes, Member Hassan?
Well, first of all, I just wanted to congratulate Fruit Street School and William S. Cohen School for being named top schools in the state. Congratulations to Mr. Fornier and Mr. Miss Brenner. I'm so proud. My kids went through those two schools, and they're phenomenal, and I'm very proud to say this to publicly, you know, community members to get them to stay in Bangor. So thank you both so much, and thank you to all of our administrators as well. And I was just wondering if we could get an update, please, on the mentorship program, Mr. Tager?
Yes.
I I think the last time I checked with you, we were like at two thirty-nine, two forty-nine.
We are. We have, you know, the goal is to recruit five hundred mentors. We have two hundred and thirty-nine was as of September the eighteenth. And I'm meeting with Julie Kimball on Monday. So if you would like, I can ask her if she would come to our next committee meeting and give you an update. She can really break it down for you. Would you like that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make sure I do that.
And are there any updates for the testing as well?
Any principals want any updates on testing? I know we're, we're off and running, and I know, Dan, do you want to kind of mention what's happening at your school? Because I was able to see it. It's a, he's got kind of a different way of doing it, which I thought was was kind of nice.
It's great. I never get.
We are testing. We're trying to be.
What testing are we talking about?
Thank you.
The pool test. Okay, there we go. There we go. Okay.
Go, go with the reading.
Do you want me to address the, the way we're doing pool testing?
No.
Is that what you're asking for, remember?
Yeah, go for pool testing. I thought we were talking about the.
They were the NWAAs. Okay, great. All right, we can do both.
Sorry, Dan.
One-stop shopping. Okay, so pool testing is going really well. We're in our second week, and I'll say what I've been really impressed with is the staff that comes in. I can't remember the group's name. Concentric. They come in and they set everything up. We break it down by classroom at Mary Snow School because we're still kind of lucky in that elementary environment where we have, you know, the self-contained homerooms. The first week, I think it took maybe an hour and a half for us to do everyone that had signed up. I wish I would have had the percentage. I think we're, we're pretty close to like over forty percent of our kids, which is really great. The second week, we had the whole thing done within forty-five minutes, and it went really well. The best thing about it was the response from the company was within twenty-four hours. So luckily, the first week, we were, we were in great shape. The second week, we had a little hiccup, but we knew right away. We were able to jump back in. Our nurse, all the nurses do a great job, but Nurse Kelly just did an exceptional job at getting the rapids in and out as quickly as we could. So we identified any issues that we had, and we were able to address it immediately. So that was really exciting. So I've been a big fan of the pool testing. NWAs are going extremely well. I think me and Fairmount are the only two that started this week. So it's, it's been phenomenal. We've, what I love about this state assessment is how fluid it is for the teachers. And so they can have total control of setting up their sessions. They get total control of setting up their accommodations. And, and then the results from the exam come back within a day. And so you have like real-time data of how your kids are doing in your classroom in the moment, that you can address destruction, I mean, immediately. Our first day was Tuesday. By Wednesday, we're already talking about all that reading data or the math data that we had, and where, where students are and where we're going to take them, we're going forward to. Same thing happened today when we did reading the day before, and today we did language usage. We'll have that data tomorrow. And it just, A, gives the teachers more control over it, which I think is a positive thing. And B, gives us that experience to engage in where they are in real time.
He's being, being humble too. What I wanted him to really tell you is that, that he's doing the reading testing during their reading block. So it just makes perfect sense.
Oh, right, yeah. Scheduling of it at Mary Snow has been wonderful. We haven't really interrupted the day at all, which I think when you have, when people think of standardized testing, you think of these high stakes, high pressure. You're in there for three hours. You're not going to move. And with this model, the NWA, we were able to go into our blocks that we have for reading and for math, and they would do the reading assessment during their time. That would be the reading block, so you can still access your math instruction through that day. You don't miss any of your specials, your lunch, your recess. Everything seems like a normal day. And within that seventy-minute block of those academic times, we're in and out of the test, which, to me, makes, and I will speak not only as the principal, but as a father of a daughter at fourteen, or at fourteen, well, that happened once. At Mary Snow now. She, she's never been more relaxed in a situation like this. And as a dad, that makes me the most happy. And seeing all those students seamlessly come in through their day has been phenomenal. Yeah. Yeah, and that's a good thing too. Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's a really comfortable environment.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but with the pool testing, if somebody tests positive and you are in the pool test, you don't have to.
Yeah, as long as you're not in close contact.
Yeah.
Yep. And so if everyone's distancing themselves appropriately, they're wearing masks appropriately, then, then you're allowed to stay. The bus can be a little difficult sometimes. But that just takes a little bit of work from us administrators to go in and figure out who's sitting where on a what bus and at what time. Which is okay, because it's worth all the effort to keep our kids safe.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that update. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Yes, Member Saret?
I, I was curious with, it's looking like early November, mid-November, hopefully, fingers crossed that FDA approves the the five to eleven COVID vaccine. Do you think, Superintendent Tager, do you think our schools will play some part in vaccine clinics at some point this year? Has there been any thought about?
I do. There's been, there's been some talk, but nothing, nothing definite yet. But if we were allowed to be a test site, we are, I mean, a vaccine site, we would certainly welcome that opportunity. Christie or Rady, if anything more definite than that, I know that it's, there's talk, and they've kind of asked if we would be willing, and yes, we are very willing.
That's great. Wonderful. Thank you.
Sure.
Excellent. And one of the things that I would like to ask the committee is, I would like to know if there's somebody who is interested in serving on the committee that is, would work with Dr. Leach in selecting the student representative for, to serve on our Bangor School Committee. Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much, Members Saret. So, yeah, you're going to hang out with all the high school students. It'd be awesome.
I will get with Dr. Leach tomorrow. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? All right. Fantastic. So I make a motion to for adjournment then. And I'm assuming there's no discussion, so all those in favor?
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
You ready?